Councilmember Burns?
Here.
Councilmember Sufferton is not here. Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Rogers? Councilmember Herakakis is virtual today due to family obligations. Councilmember Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Harris?
Present.
Councilmember Isles?
Here.
And Councilmember Nusma will not be here today, correct?
Correct.
Yes. And then Mayor Biss?
Here. We have a quorum present and are prepared to do our work for the evening in this area. The first item on our agenda is to approve virtual participation. I'm understanding as are the people not physically here. Councilmember Herakakis is the only one with planned virtual participation due to statutory permissible reason. Is there a motion to permit that?
Second. Yes, so move. Second.
Councilmember Harris moves to allow Councilmember Herakakis's virtual participation pursuant to statutory permissible reason previously transmitted in writing. Councilmember Burns, second. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
With five voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and Councilmember Herakakis will be on the roll for the rest of the evening and permitted to participate remotely. The next item on the agenda is my public announcements and proclamations of which, would the clerk please add Councilmember Rogers to the roll, of which there is just one. This is LGBTQIA+ Veterans Month. And, well, let me, I'll begin with the proclamation. Whereas the city of Evanston is a welcoming community committed to justice, inclusion, and honoring the service and sacrifice of all veterans, including those from the LGBTQIA+ plus community, and whereas throughout our nation's history countless LGBTQIA+ individuals have served honorably in the United States Armed Forces despite facing systemic discrimination in visibility and forced silence, and whereas from 1994 to 2011, the military's "Don't Ask, Don't Tell" DADT policy prevented openly LGBTQIA+ service members from serving without fear of discharge, often leading to the loss of military careers, benefits, and dignity. And whereas although DADT was repealed through the Don't Ask, Don't Tell repeal act of 2010, thousands of veterans discharged under the policy still struggle to access earned benefits and receive the recognition they deserve due to discharge statuses that remain less than honorable. And whereas LGBTQIA+ veterans, particularly transgender veterans and veterans of color, continue to face barriers to care, equity, and acknowledgement within the broader veteran support system, and whereas the city of Evanston affirms its commitment to recognizing the service of all veterans and to advocating for full inclusion and justice for LGBTQIA+ veterans whose contributions and sacrifices have too often gone unrecognized. Now therefore, I do hereby proclaim the month of July 2025 as LGBTQIA+ Veterans Month in the city of Evanston and call upon all residents to honor the service of LGBTQIA+ veterans, support their pursuit of justice, and celebrate their enduring contributions to our nation and our community. Now, I want to give a shout out to Mike Petrusis who reached out, advocated for this, not just with myself, but with Councilmember Harris, worked with Councilmember Davis to draft this. So thank you, Councilmember, for your assistance with that as well. And I know that he is here today with several members of American Veterans for Equal Rights, which is an organization that is dedicated to achieving full and equal rights for LGBTQIA+ veterans. And so I just want to thank all of you who are in this two-front fight, volunteering on behalf of the whole nation and our freedoms, and simultaneously fighting for your dignity and those in the whole community. And so I want to ask you to come forward and receive the proclamation, and I would ask the council and the community to join me in thanking them for their advocacy and for their elevation of this issue, which I think deserves all of our awareness.
I'm Larry Simpson. We like to go by our acronym, AVER. AVER is an English verb that means to declare emphatically, and that's what we like to do. AVER was founded in 1990. At that time, homosexuals were not allowed to serve in the American Armed Forces, at least not openly. As veterans, we could speak out against this policy, but people that were serving in the military had to remain silent about their sexual orientation, or else they would be subject to immediate dismissal. Some commanding officers really didn't care, but others did. We veterans have advocated for others, but today's proclamation honors us veterans, and I appreciate that. I thank our allies who have helped us make changes to policy, and I thank Mike Petrusis for proposing today's proclamation, and I thank the Evanston City Council and Mayor Biss, excuse me, Biss, for approving the proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you again for your service to our country and your advocacy on this important issue. I also want to acknowledge that Michael Sarah Schoenberg is here representing Majority Leader Gable, who was not able to be here this evening, but also wanted to stand in solidarity with AVER and the other LGBTQIA+ veterans being honored this evening and this month. So thank you for joining us. The next item on our agenda is the city manager's public announcements.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Clerk Mendoza, just briefly, I wanted to encourage people to join us this Saturday morning at 10:00 a.m. for their renaming ceremony, the Prieto Community Center. Look forward to seeing folks there. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is communications from the city clerk.
I just have a public comment from Angela Panisi saying that SP1 does not address the business community, and I will forward that email. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we will do public comment and have the final opportunity for feedback on the 2025 through 2029 draft consolidated plan and the 2024 draft public participation plan. The two plans will be submitted to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, as part of the funding process for Community Development Block Grants, CDBG, Emergency Solutions Grants, ESG, and the Home Investment Partnership Programs. This evening, there's just almost exactly 15 people seeking to give public comment, so all will be given three minutes. We begin with those who signed up in person, to speak in person, beginning with Joe Caprile, followed by Steve Test, and then David Galloway.
Good evening. I'm Joe Caprile. I'm a 40-year-plus resident of the sixth ward. I'm here tonight on behalf of a group of Evanston professionals, and I'm here to offer a recommended approach to upcoming revisions to the existing zoning code. These recommendations were sent as a memo to Mayor Biss and city council members on June 11th and was published in the roundtable on June 12th. Of the individuals who drafted it and supported it are all Evanston residents, are all established in the field of architecture, city planning, land use law, and real estate development. Their names, addresses, and their affiliations or companies are listed on the memo. The recommendation is that a new consultant with broad, non-biased experience in the drafting of a zoning code be retained moving forward. Also, the community continues to need to play an open and active role in the process. The process really starts with a preparation of an RFP, that's a request for proposal, and that clearly defines the objectives of what to be achieved and includes draft of the comprehensive plan and housing plan. It's important that the process starts now so the consultant is retained as the comprehensive plan is being completed. Evanston has nine wards, each being a different neighborhood with their own character. It's going to take an experienced professional to weave all the neighborhoods together in a single comprehensive zoning ordinance. We are requesting that this item be added as an agenda item to the regular, next regular city council meeting for discussion and action. Good plans create a vision. Zoning is the tool that achieves it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Steve Test, who will be followed by David Galloway, and then Mary Rosinsky.
Hi, Steve Test, 1135 Hinman Avenue. I'm here not only to second Joe Caprile's request and the request by his august set of dozen colleagues, but to also suggest that the strategic housing plan be completed before any discussion of changing zoning is taken up. And the logic of having the strategic housing plan proceed to completion and at the same time in parallel, the RFP for a new zoning consultant that Joe and his colleagues are requesting is logical, orderly, it gets the horse back in front of the cart, they can run in parallel. When the strategic housing plan is done, you will have gone through the process of getting a zoning consultant onboard, and it all merges at the end. The next six, eight months of activity are well laid out, it's orderly, it's logical, it makes complete sense, and you all should absolutely take this up as soon as you can. Let's see it on the agenda, let's see a discussion, let's have an RFP that we can all be proud of, to find a zoning consultant who will really do a good job. The last thing we want to see is the ZoneCo map taken down off the shelf, dusted off, and foisted off on the people. That thing should have never seen the light of day, and it should never see the light of day again. So I urge you to take the logical, orderly steps that we're suggesting, and I think we'll have a much better process going forward. Thanks.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is David Galloway, who will be followed by Mary Rosinsky, and then Sheila Sullivan.
Good evening. First off, I'd like to thank all council members for your devotion to this city, and particularly in such challenging times, as well as you, Mayor and City Manager. I'm here to, representing the Board of Design Evanston, because we are in support of the memo and what Joe Caprile has previously conveyed to you. We believe that this consultant that you hire must be adept at concentrating on the form resulting from a zoning ordinance, as well as the typical formulas, which are so frequently thrown about. I have lived at Evanston since 1983. In the past year, year and a half, I've made a point of visiting virtually every street and neighborhood of this city. And I am, I am so proud that we are such a diverse city. I would not want to live anyplace else. And I believe that, given the events beyond our control, that Evanston is going to not only continue to be one of the best places to live in the country, it may very well be the best place to live in the country. And we owe it to ourselves to make sure that the diversity of it is represented accurately and effectively in a new zoning ordinance. And the complexity of varying types of housing is a benefit for us, and we need to respect that benefit. I am an architect by training, and there are many other architects that are members of Design Evanston. We have all just sort of fiddled around with ways in which we can increase the residency in virtually any district in the city without negatively affecting the appearance of its density. So there are ways that we can achieve a win-win situation, but it will require the assistance of an appropriately qualified zoning consultant that is adept at dealing with forms, communicating forms, facilitating discussions, and also has some architectural knowledge. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Mary Rosinsky, who will be followed by Sheila Sullivan, and then Andrea Liss.
Hi, thank you very much. I'm reading this analysis of a housing consideration on behalf of Alf McConnell, a longtime Evanston resident who has successfully developed quality real estate projects, including many affordable housing, for decades. I would like to make the following points on behalf of Alf. The city council should not approve EE2045 until, at a minimum, a market study has been commissioned to address the following specific questions. How many residents of Evanston's existing affordable housing units are occupied by residents who work in Evanston versus those who work outside of Evanston? As for Evanston senior citizens, how many have been occupying, who occupy affordable housing units now? In what municipality did they live before they first occupied affordable units in Evanston? Because there are significant costs to a municipality for affordable housing, sufficient affordable housing units should be developed in that municipality to meet the needs of those residents who work in that municipality and the existing seniors. The costs who are lower for real estate taxes per affordable unit and the cost of social services for those residents should be considered. Evanston should not effectively subsidize other municipalities by promoting the develop of excessive number of affordable units that are essentially there to benefit other municipalities. Revising Evanston's R1 and R2 zoning to allow for construction of two to four units on all lots would not create affordable housing, and such units will be sold or rented as market rate of housing. Also, once your upzoning is approved, if you should do that, it will be essentially impossible to reverse that. So thank you. I hope, and I agree with everything our previous speaker said, it's, we're creating, it's an art to create a great community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Sheila Sullivan, who will be followed by Andrea Liss, and then Paula Twiling.
Good evening. Sheila Sullivan, Ward Three. To continue with the fourth point, only the construction of apartment buildings with 40 or more units can potentially create affordable housing because of the need for economies of scale. Otherwise, no profit would be realized. The need to attract the necessary special financing, and also the need to have experienced professional property managers. Affordable housing should be located near shopping and services, as well as public transportation, which would make a car unnecessary, although you should also know that the CTA ridership has declined significantly since 2011. However, no purposeful plans to grow Evanston's population through more housing, affordable or otherwise, should be made until there is community consensus on population and density that transparently addresses the problems created by population growth. As the population grows, the cost of local government services also grows, and therefore the property taxes per unit will not materially decrease, especially because affordable housing pays lower property taxes per unit compared to market rate housing. The unmet costs would be made up by the rest of the taxpayers. Evanston is already the ninth most densely populated municipality out of Illinois's 1,312 municipalities. Chicago is number five. Evanston is denser than any city in Wisconsin, Michigan, Ohio, Indiana, and Missouri. There is no precedent in Illinois or any neighboring state for increased affordability by making a dense city even more crowded. Some areas of Evanston already have way too much traffic and cyclists and everything. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Andrea Liss, who will be followed by Paula Twiling, and then Paul Breslin.
Hello, my name is Andrea Liss, and I live in the third ward. People move to Evanston because of its unique character, charm, and ambiance, partly created by the neighborhoods of single-family homes. Residents do not support radically changing the character of Evanston to be even more urban like Chicago. The percentage of housing units that are single-family homes has already been reduced and should not be further reduced. Evanston has 32% as compared to the United States, which has 64%, and will met at 75%. The revision of R1, R2 zoning will reduce and eventually deny the option for people to move into a detached, single-family home in Evanston. The many relatively modestly priced homes scattered throughout Evanston will be the first homes to be purchased and demolished. Developers and speculators have already obtained purchase options on some of these lower-priced homes. Upzoning would be unfair to residents who have chosen to live or retire in Evanston's quaint neighborhoods of single-family homes. Owners certainly did not purchase their homes thinking that the house next door would be demolished and replaced with a two-to-four-unit building. It would be a shame to have historic and/or attractive and/or modestly priced homes demolished and replaced with two-to-four-unit buildings. Ecologically speaking, tearing down Evanston's single-family homes and filling landfills with their spoils is not good public policy. For the good of advocates of affordable housing, the very people Alf has spent decades helping, such advocates and their constituents should not begrudge people of all income levels who desire to live in neighborhoods of single-family homes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Paula Twiling, who will be followed by Paul Breslin, and then Alf McConnell.
Good evening, Paula Twiling, seventh ward. For the good of advocates of affordable housing, the very people that Alf McConnell has spent decades helping, such advocates and their constituents should not begrudge people of all income levels who desire to live in neighborhoods of single-family homes. There are neighborhoods of single-family homes throughout Evanston occupied by people of various religions, races, sexual orientation, who have purchased or rented these single-family homes and want to keep their single-family neighborhoods as they are and don't want their neighborhoods gentrified. Everyone is aware that the Illinois Human Rights Act forbids discrimination in real estate transactions, and we all endorse that. People are entitled to spend their money however they wish, and if some people choose to live in a house, so be it. Live and let live. Give everyone the chance to live in the type of housing they choose, apartments, condos, townhouses, and detached, single-family houses. Currently, Evanston has these choices. Most people who have chosen to live in Evanston have done so, appreciating the diversity of housing and the people that exist in Evanston. Alf McConnell is willing to donate his time, effort, and expertise to the city of Evanston to help create affordable housing, assuming Evanston does not revise the existing R1 and R2 zoning. Evanston's elected leaders and staff should spend their time reducing government expenses, making Evanston a better place and safer place to live, and reducing the number of vacant retail stores in Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Paul Breslin, who will be followed by Alf McConnell, and then Jeff Barini.
Paul Breslin, first ward. Three issues that the Evanston City Council should consider. Before considering any zoning changes, including the 31-story 605 Davis Street Building, the city should first request the developer to provide a sources and uses of funds statement and an EBITDA statement, which is earnings before interest, taxes, depreciation, and The city should also consider the consequences of the $40 to $50 million in real estate savings to the 605 Davis Development that will need to be paid for by Evanston residents. This huge subsidy alone is sufficient reason to turn down this zoning request. Every additional new building that receives this real estate tax abatement will cause Evanston taxpayers to make up the difference. Consider replacing paid parking with two-hour free parking to attract potential customers from surrounding municipalities. Currently, many potential customers of Evanston businesses refuse to shop in Evanston because of the paid parking requirements and its associated inconvenience. Evanston's share of the increased sales tax revenues might make up for its loss of the parking revenues. Finally, improve the appearance of Evanston, for instance, by replacing broken sidewalk pavers and bricks with replacement pavers and bricks and not unsightly asphalt patches. Replacing sidewalks that are uplifted by tree roots. Grinding sidewalk joints to be flat, thus eliminating tripping hazards. Work with the CTA and Union Pacific to paint rusted viaducts. In conclusion, we urge the city council to consider the experience and counsel of Alf McConnell and others who are experts in the affordable housing industry, so that the result is the ideal amount of affordable housing for Evanstonians in the ideal locations and not just a recipe for gentrification. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Alf McConnell, who will be followed by Jeff Barini, and then Dave Michalak.
Though CTA ridership is down, please note that residents of affordable housing are a group of people who are least likely to own a car. Consequently, such folks have the greatest need for public transportation and therefore have the greatest need to live near public transportation, shopping, and services. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jeff Barini, who will be followed by Dave Michalak, and then Krista Larson.
Good evening, Jeff Barini, second ward. I'd like to speak about A3 on the agenda tonight, and ask you to please slow this down. Whether we call it putting assets to work or transportation-oriented development, at its heart, it's about the sale or lease of the civic center, the noise center, or police fire headquarters. And whether this is a good idea or bad, residents simply don't know enough about it, and these buildings belong to them. So this requires more thorough disclosure, I think. Plus, there are other initiatives that are underway that you're working on already, the comprehensive plan, the strategic housing plan, possible zoning changes. All of these relate to A3, and so they should be coordinated, both to avoid problems and ideally to get better results out of all of the efforts. So I ask that you please hold this up until we can have a more thorough public presentation and discussion about that. Secondly, regarding public comment in general, some coaching perhaps. It was said from the dais last week at the Rules Committee meeting that, quote, "Public comment is nobody's favorite time," end quote. I would disagree, and I would imagine that most of the people signed up tonight would disagree with that. It was noted that, of course, calling and writing is a more productive way to It was noted that, of course, calling and writing is a more productive way to get contact and sway you as council members, and that's probably very true, certainly. But you don't have to answer those, okay? Here is where you're most accountable, all right? And we understand that this can be uncomfortable, and I empathize with you. You're in the process of doing your goals right now. I hope one involves continuous improvement, both of city operations and with your operation and function as a body here. To do better, you need feedback. Every website you visit wants you to take a survey about what you think about them. Your most successful organizations thrive on engagement. And of course, the irony is that your worst critics are often will give you the most engaged feedback as well. Public comment is already limited to 45 minutes, but it's direct, unfiltered feedback. I invite you to reframe your thinking about public comment, and if you can, you know, work to find a little more value in what we're all saying, perhaps it will be a little less endurance and a little more education. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Dave Michalak, who will be followed by Krista Larson, and then Ray Friedman.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if you remember, but I called and left you a message informing you that the forestry in Evanston is less manicured than the forestry in the jungles of Vietnam. I don't know if you recall that voicemail. I never did hear back from you, so it's glad to have the opportunity to speak to you in person today. So let me explain to you why this is an important issue. I believe that every resident pays taxes here, has a right to be able to walk on the sidewalk comfortably without having to exit to the street to make passage. There are literally hundreds of trees that need that cover the sidewalk in such a way that do not allow passage. They make passage impossible. Now, that's a safety risk for children that are legally allowed to ride their bicycles on the sidewalk if they're under the age of 12. So that means they have to go off the sidewalk, onto the street, and take a chance of getting hit by a car on the street. Now, I've been hit by a car in Evanston, so I know it can happen to a small child, okay? The guy just came right out of nowhere, wasn't even looking. So I don't know what the city is waiting for, so I would hope tomorrow morning you get on the line with the forestry director, because I also left him a voicemail, and ask him what he plans to do about this ongoing problem. It's been an ongoing problem for 14 years. I've called countless times, probably hundreds, with 311, making work orders for this issue to be handled. I've left countless messages with the forestry director. I know I've called you more than once as well. I haven't heard back from you. Maybe that's because I expressed my disappointment that you were reelected. I don't know. But more importantly, and I want you to know, I've voted Democratic all my life except for your election. So more importantly, this is a safety issue for all the residents here in Evanston. And as I said in the last meeting, in the wintertime, and I hope I have your attention here, Mr. Mayor, in the wintertime, when it starts to snow and branches hang even lower and they accumulate ice, they become a hazard in terms of eye injury. And I've mentioned at the last meeting, I've almost been hit in the eye myself had it not been for my prescription glasses or wearing a hood because it was wintertime and the weather. I was allowed to avoid that. So this is a huge issue. I'm talking hundreds of trees. You know, I walk through every single neighborhood in this city, and I never see you. I think you should take a walk in your own city. Second issue, our laws and legislation represent our values. We have a huge issue with aggressive begging throughout in front of our businesses, and you have a high failure rate when it comes to businesses here in Evanston. And I think you would want to address this matter. I know for a fact that Management Trader Joe's have told me that they've had to call the police every day. That was last summer. So not only that, what they're doing is that these people that are engaging in this behavior, and we have a care team, so what happens, they tell them that there's other services available, they say, "No, thank you. We'd rather stay here and arrest people for money." And that's a problem for your businesses and is a problem for them, because you give someone a fish, they eat for a day. You teach them how to fish, they eat for a lifetime. Now, this is not out of lack of compassion. My real concern is...
Thank you very much.
I'll be seeing you next meeting.
The next speaker is Krista Larson, who will be followed by Ray Friedman, and then Jeff Krista's no longer here. We'll move ahead with Ray Friedman, who will be followed by Jeff Smith.
Good evening, everyone. Well, here we are again in another edition of public comment. Three minutes allowed, if not more than 15 people, but for a special city council meeting, only two minutes. Why is that? Still wondering what's the purpose of these public comment sessions, as many people have said behind me, or before me. Can you please present the ordinance that requires Alderman to respond to all public comments as required in some states, as Bobby Burns had pointed out to us and offered to present it as an ordinance? Maybe can you maybe you can reassure residents that our opinions actually mean something? Once again, we need a voice and a choice. We should not be sitting here at 909 Davis, spending millions of our tax dollars without the discussion and approval of the residents first, while leaving 2100 Ridge empty, and now deciding to hire a company to figure out what to do with city properties. Shouldn't that be done? Shouldn't that have been done first before we spent millions of tax dollars needlessly and borrowing again and again and again from general obligation bonds? Why aren't we paying down some of the debts we have instead of creating new ones? We owe $200 million in general obligation bonds, which we pay $15 million a year for the principal and interest on those bonds, and just creating new general obligation bonds almost every council meeting. And here, we're paying $2.5 million over 15 years for rent when we own property here. Doesn't make any sense to me at all. As far as public comment, once again, this is your chance to show your residents that you care. We need your response to all public comments, not now or even in person, a weekly newsletter or an email to provide your feedback. Mayor Biss has figured out how to send emails to promote his ambitions. I've received about 30 emails in the past couple of months, and 16 in June alone. Every other day, I got an email from Mayor Biss. Thank you very much. I agree with most of what you said, but there's a whole bunch of things that need to be done, organized, straightened out right here in Evanston that we need to take care of now. So I hope you can figure out how to create the dialogue that these public comments are intended to create, okay? You can be part of the problem or part of the solution.
The next speaker is Jeff Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, city clerk. I'm going to comment on the consolidated plan. Somebody has to. The citizen comment period for the plan runs through tonight, July 14th. Happy Best Steel Day. But the staff was already making recommendations before the conclusion of this period, which should indicate that there's something amiss with the process. Also, the release of the 230-page consolidated plan was nearly contemporaneous with the third draft of the 178-page Envision Evanston Plan, and that works a hardship on the public ability to process both of those. I will say that the consolidated plan contains a lot of useful information and attempted analysis. There's some sociological analysis, and it contains a lot of the kind of data many had called for, but which was lacking in drafts of Envision Evanston. However, I would not send this document to the federal government. It suffers from some of the same problems as the comprehensive plan. It's got a near-complete omission of discussing the demand side of the housing market: who's buying, who's selling, who's renting, how and why demographics are changing. Its focus is only on the supply side. It basically signals that there are predetermined outcomes to what's going on with Envision Evanston and zoning to follow, which also undermines the fairness of that process. There's some mischaracterization of what community input focused on. There's an overly racialized narrative that's often unnecessary to the information that's requested by HUD. It conflates public with private action and makes pretty large leaps from some increasingly distant history to present conditions. The consolidated plan adds some problems of its own, such as flat-out inaccurate statements. On one page, it says our population is growing. Within two, three pages, it says it's shrinking. Another time, it says that the percentage of single-family detached housing in Evanston has been increasing as a share of our housing units. All of us here know that that is just flat-out not true. I gave you data months ago showing thousands of units built, multi-unit, in Evanston. We know that 5,000 single-family homes have not been built. They have not been keeping pace. It cannot possibly be the case that the percentage of single-family housing. But we're going to tell the federal government that that's not right. There's also insufficient input from resident organizations and homeowner groups or the real estate-selling and leasing community, who each have considerable expertise about housing. I'm happy to see input from community partners for affordable housing. I'm happy to see input from the interfaith community, but there are others who have something to add. There are statements about the Putting Assets to Work program that haven't been put the way it's presented, and notably, Evanston residents might not support turning parks, historic structures, or schools into affordable housing. Ms. Clerk?
Thank you very much.
Yes, if I could give the written comments, because I couldn't.
This concludes the list of people who signed up in person to speak in person, so we now move on to those who signed up online to speak in person. Lynda Damashek.
Signed up online to speak in person.
Which is why I just called on you.
Go talk.
Yeah, yeah, Lynda, that's you. That's you.
Okay. Sorry. Okay. Lynda Damashek, good evening, council members. It appears to me that the current approach to the city's comprehensive plan and future housing development is to prioritize growing the city's population size and density, and then reverse-engineering the political steps you need to get there. That is the opposite of what a respectful, democratic approach to a responsible and consensus-driven planning process should involve. A more legitimate process would begin with data about housing needs, and that would inform intelligent decision-making. I encourage you to proceed with the following steps in this order. Number one, create a strategic housing plan. It's a legal requirement. Evanston is a year overdue, and this would quantify with appropriate data what the city's housing needs for the next decade are. We currently have no data to support the need to make drastic changes to Evanston's comprehensive plan and zoning codes. Number two, use that information from the strategic housing plan to inform the decision-making on the comprehensive plan, especially related to housing and development sections. So do the strategic housing plan first before you even get into discussion on the comprehensive plan and voting. Number three, publish a request for proposal for a new competent zoning consultant to handle the zoning code update. And four, finally, the zoning code review would provide a lot of opportunity for public discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. This concludes the in-person portion of public comment. The only person who signed up to speak online is Virginia Mann, who I do not see in the Zoom. Ms. Mann, are you, if you, if you're one of the unlabeled Zoom participants, just try to unmute, and we'll unmute you. All right, it looks like Virginia Mann is not in the Zoom, and this marks the end of public comment and closes the public comment period for the 2025 through 2029 draft consolidated plan and 2024 draft public participation plan to be submitted to HUD. We now move on to special orders of business. Is there a motion relative to item SP1?
It's a move.
Councilmember Burns moves the council continue discussing the city council goals for the 82nd city council. Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there a presentation from staff?
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, Clark Mendoza. Staff has worked over the last couple of weeks to put together draft council goals for your consideration tonight. This is an initial draft from us, and we're looking forward to feedback, to hear your comments and suggestions, and then we would bring back hopefully a final set of council goals for your ratification.
Give me one second here. It's always the sort of air traffic control is tougher when you've got people in multiple Is there any discussion on the draft that folks have before them? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Councilmember Iles.
I don't want you to escape with no comment on this. So I took a look at it, and I was specifically looking at the housing affordability section, and the only reference I see whatsoever to the unhoused is the last bullet point, which is talking about a very specific thing. You know, there's a direct correlation between affordability and the number of unhoused in the community, and communities that have had some success usually have a commitment from the city. We can't just rely on nonprofits to help this community. I think we need to be more active in the way that we address issues and services around the unhoused, and so I'd like staff to think about it, and maybe even I'd be willing to have some conversations with them about it and come up with at least one more bullet point that talks about people who are currently without services in our city that need a little bit more, need more from us.
Mayor, I just wanted to add a couple of other council goals that were added, that we're proposing that did not make the Thursday night packet. One of them, or three of them, are actually under finance and organizational performance. The first one would be eliminate the city's structural deficit based on the city's financial situation over the next three years. Another goal is to deploy zero priority-based, outcome-based budgeting for one department annually to assess resource allocation and operational efficiency. As you all know, we are in the process of doing that for the Public Works Agency Department this year. Another one would be to implement the Denver Peak Academy to identify process improvements, reduce redundancies, and enhance customer experience. That's also in the continuous improvement discussions that we've had. And then also wanted to add one from the Fire Department, which is to maintain our insurance office, our ISO Class 1 rating for the Evanston Fire Department. Thank you.
Councilmember Davis.
Under, so adding to what Luke mentioned about us basically addressing our structural deficit, I would also like to see a bullet item for us to basically separate out our discretionary and non-discretionary spending and to frame our budget around discretionary and non-discretionary, meaning things that are legal obligations. So, you know, things that can leave us open to liability or contracts that we have to execute, and then separating that out from things that we do, I don't want to say, I was just saying discretionarily, so the consultants that we hire, the projects that we take on and everything of that nature, to really give us a perspective, and then also to assign budgets based on discretionary, non-discretionary, and past spending so that we have a clear understanding of what we're going to in the future, and being more strict about upholding and staying within the boundaries of that. For any council members that weren't our not on finance and budget, a large amount of our overspending out of budget came from things that were unanticipated expenses that were fully discretionary. So they were not things that we had to spend or things that we even spent on in previous years. They were new expenses that were unaccounted for. They were new expenses that were unaccounted for. And so I would like there to be a more strict mechanism, and maybe this is, I would like us to develop a more strict mechanism for going out of budget and also knowing where our budget is for everything. I'll also add, if it could be a separate, specific bullet, I don't think that there's anything on the city council agenda that we vote on that costs money that should not have a budget attached to it. We have some items that do and some don't, and I think everything should have a budget attached to it, and it should all be coming from somewhere. And then one of the other things I was going to say is that I actually did not think the climate action and resiliency was detailed or broad enough and seemed to require much requirement from city council in our decision-making and in the initiatives that we push forward enough to be a line item for, I guess, like discussion on the city council level. All of this seems like implementation for staff, and there doesn't seem to be much done left for us to do there. So I'm not sure if we could consider this a... I mean, climate action is a priority, but it doesn't seem like something we're going to be working on significantly in the next couple of years on city council unless people can tell me what they think of us proposing in like the near future. But in my discussions with the other city council members, I don't see any broad initiatives coming out anytime soon. So if anyone has anything that they're thinking about, I'd really be interested to know. But those are my two things. I'm done.
Thank you very much. And so seeing no further discussion. Oop, Councilmember Rogers.
My general take on all of these are lots of these are things we're doing. They aren't necessarily our goals. And I think one way for us to evaluate whether this should be a goal or something we're working on or something that is, something our staff is doing, is, I mentioned this at our meeting before, was making these SMART goals. And so making them specific, you know, measurable, achievable, relevant, and timely. So, and I'm just going to randomly pick one here. I haven't picked one out ahead of time, I promise. So we have one here for fill 95% sworn officers. That one's actually pretty good. I picked the wrong one. Let me find a different one for you randomly here, because there's a lot of them. Complete a full utilization of geographic assessment of all playgrounds and identify which playgrounds could be potentially returned to open green space. So kind of applying some of that information, you know, putting timelines on these things other than just our terms. Everything can't be a December, or I guess it would be a April of 2029 timeline. Some of these are a little more, there was one about lead service lines. It's like, you know, we're going to complete or continue to work forward on our lead service lines according to state and federal law. That seems like we don't really have a lot of discretion in that one. So, I mean, I would like to see some of these kind of reexamined as to whether or not they are truly things that should be goals for us. And just the length of them, if everything becomes a goal, then nothing really takes priority. So I'd like to see us maybe winnow these down a little bit, and I think by putting them through the SMART lens, maybe some of those things just fall off naturally.
Thank you for your feedback.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Davis with 2:10 left.
Yeah, I also wanted to inquire. So we have in here investment development of a health hub to serve at least 1,000 community members by 2029. I think we should remove it. That's my first instinct. I could be convinced otherwise perhaps, but we have two hospitals that don't pay property taxes in the city, and I think that we should be leveraging that in order to get this benefit for our community if we think that it's a need in our community instead of, I'm not sure what hub means, but if we're talking about creating a new site in addition to the hospital and like, what do we have, like three immediate cares in two hospitals? We have, other cities don't have the like luck of having two hospitals in their city. So I don't understand why we wouldn't be leveraging that instead of trying to spend more money that, again, I think that maybe I'm the only one who realizes we don't have. So I'm confused about this as well, my understanding as well, because the North Shore Hospital, Evanston Hospital, or Endeavor Health, wherever we're at with that, is in my ward, and they have told me that they are very committed to being involved in the community and giving back where necessary. So if hub means that we're going to collaborate with them in some type of space, I'm for it, but if we're talking about buying more property to do another project, I don't like that either. So I don't know if that's up for discussion or anything, but...
If it's okay, I was going to ask Director Ogbo to come up and then speak to it further.
Sure.
Good day, members of the city council. Ike Ogbo, Director for the Health and Human Services Department. You are right. We do have two hospitals, including the Health Center, Erie. We do collaborate on a number of elements regarding resources and health access and what have you. Given that we do have a number of community members who are low-income or no-income at all, engaging with the hospitals, even though a number of them might be open to providing free services, the health hub will be providing free services. We are looking at a number of grants that will support this so that it does not have to come out of the city's purse force to engage in the activities of the health hub. And the activities of the health hub will not take over whatever the hospitals are doing. This is just an access point for our low-income or no-income individuals who might not have any income to access health resources, and that's pretty much what that entails.
Thank you very much. This brings a... Oop. You guys, man. You guys. Councilmember Kelly.
So where does this go from here? This does seem really lengthy, and I would agree, I like SMART goals. What happens next with this list?
So the next step would be, and I appreciate the feedback tonight, we will work to make it a little more succinct and SMARTify some of the goals as well, and we'll bring that back at future meeting, hopefully for your ratification. After that process, if you all are in concurrence with the goals, then we would also provide, within 30 days, provide a work plan that demonstrates the next steps in implementing the goals.
And would there be a special meeting just to go over this? I mean, I just feel like there's a lot in here, and I'm just, would it be another council meeting, or, I mean, would it be part of a larger council agenda, or would be...
I mean, I think that's what the hope was for tonight's discussion, was to receive feedback from council members, and then we would come back again with a revised draft for additional feedback from council, potentially ratification that night if we need to come back for another discussion, then we can do that. As you can imagine, we're anxious to solidify our goals and get moving, and we also appreciate the opportunity. The last time we adopted goals, I think we only had about an 18-month runway to do that work, and so we're excited about having a four-year runway, nearly four-year runway to do that work so we can be a little bit more ambitious in how we approach it.
Okay, thank you. So this all came out of one meeting, right? This was developed from one meeting? And I'm not sure, I'm thinking maybe I, with the new council?
I believe there might have been two different discussions. Mayor?
So we had a council meeting where there was, I would say, a medium amount of engagement that was mostly consisted of people trying to add stuff to the list, and then based on that, staff prepared what you have before you, where we now have minimal engagement and people trying to get stuff taken off the list. So like at some point, it's on the folks up here to provide clear direction so that we get something back that's what we want. At this time, no one is asking to speak for the first time, so we go back to Councilmember Rogers with three minutes left.
If I could make a suggestion, maybe that we get these goals and be allowed to respond to them in writing, maybe, because it's kind of hard to have a discussion on some of these issues, whereas we might be able to respond in writing better, because I know, Mr. Mayor, you like to have all of our amendments in writing and things like that. And so just trying to move the process along that way, similar to what we've done with the comp plan, like we've done with the rules, where it might be a chance for us to respond directly in writing and then have something more tangible to deal with.
I think that's fine, and I think this, this meeting is like a bit of an ex-post piece of evidence that probably that would have been a good idea. So I would be fine suggesting that staff take this feedback, produce another draft, send it to council, give them a window of at least a week, but not too long, to provide feedback in writing, take that, and then produce a draft for the next time we see it in public, at which point I think we'd expect it to just pass. Councilmember Burns.
Yeah, I was literally going to recommend the same thing, including, you know, I think it's really our responsibility as council, if we think this is too long, to just say, hey, here's what I think should be removed. I mean, this is, at the end of the day, these are our goals and our staff goals. It's really council, city council goals and priorities, and we should treat them as such. So I think that's a good idea.
So we have a plan. Thanks to all, I think we're heading in a good direction here. We now move to the consent agenda. I know that item P1 did not make it out of committee, and so must be removed from the consent agenda. Are there other items that folks would like to see removed from the consent agenda?
A3 and A9 and HCDC? HCDC1? Did you...
So I have at this time, A3, A9, P1, and HCDC1. A3, A9, P1, and HCDC1. I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I would move the consent agenda for the city council minus the items of A3, A9, P1, and HCDC1.
The motion fails for lack of a second.
Second.
I'll second.
Oh, Lord. Look alive. All right. Councilmember Rogers moves adoption of the consent agenda with the following four exceptions: A3, A9, P1, and HCDC1. Councilmember Burns, upon a certain amount of arm-twisting seconds, would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Burns.
Aye.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers.
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Isles.
Aye.
With seven voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, and the consent agenda with the four exceptions just enumerated is adopted. Now on item A3, Councilmember Harris, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move for the approval of contract award to provide for putting assets to work, RFP 2502.
I'll second.
Councilmember Harris moves approval of the contract award just described. Councilmember Isles seconds. Councilmember Kelly, followed by Burns.
Thank you. We had a pretty long discussion about this at APW, but I feel very strongly that while we're in the middle of very important efforts, initiatives, a comprehensive plan, strategic housing plan, and other, that we should not be also adding this to it. This is something that should come, if we need this, this would come out of our comprehensive plan and our strategic housing plan, assessing our public facilities, our art center. All this will be spoken to and addressed in a comprehensive plan, and I don't think it makes any sense. I know we got a grant, but I don't think we should be simply chasing grants. And, you know, if we are going to do this, I think we would be missing an opportunity if we didn't figure out how this can interface well and articulate it really clearly to work with the comprehensive plan scaffold, like scaffold it so that it intercalates, so that it interfaces with the, with the plan. I don't think it makes sense right now to be engaging with yet another firm, another consultant. We had a bad experience with our first ones with the comprehensive plan, now to be engaging with another one for yet another plan. I don't want to see staff's direction pulled that way while we're developing a comprehensive plan and a strategic housing plan. So I would like to see this held at least until we have some clear definition and explanation, detailed explanation as to how this works with our comprehensive plan and strategic housing plan.
Councilmember Burns, followed by Rogers.
I actually passed for now. I want to hear from Councilmember Rogers. So you have a floor next.
Councilmember Rogers.
Thank you. I guess this is a question, I think Mr. Zalmazak probably is going to have to answer this for us if he's in the room. Oh, there he is. I can see you're hiding over there. I guess my question is kind of, what is the final product? What are we hoping to get out of this? Is this just a pathway for us to move forward on these assets? Is it developing a full plan? Is it kind of identifying opportunities? What is the, what is the final work product?
Thank you. Good evening, members of the city council. I'm Paul Zalmazak. I serve as Economic Development Manager. Thank you for your question. I'm going to try to answer it a little differently than I did during committee. The putting assets to work philosophy is not a comprehensive plan. It's not an urban plan. What it is, is a citizen engagement, a community engagement process that'll help drive the city council to an answer to how we're going to use our assets in a more efficient and potentially revenue-generating way. This particular grant is highly focused on transit-oriented development, and specifically we recommended to the last council and move forward with the grant application to the U.S. government, the Department of Transportation, for the 2100 Ridge Building Civic Center, Noyce Cultural Arts Center, and the Police and Fire Headquarters. Why we chose those is because they have the largest immediate need from terms, in terms of an expense perspective, in terms of maintaining them, and obviously, we're not even using the Civic Center at the moment, so what's the next step for that building? Police and Fire needs significant work. A lot of work has been done by city staff that led up to the decision to recommend to the councils to move forward with putting assets to work. Why the Police and Fire Headquarters is on the list is because it needs significant investment, and it is completely outmoded. For those that are on the council that haven't toured it, that may be an opportunity, kind of a next step for you so you can see what they're experiencing. And then Noyce Cultural Arts Center has some deferred maintenance that requires somewhere in the range, whether or not, I would have to ask my public works colleagues to answer, but somewhere in the range of $20 million of deferred maintenance over the years. Those are real numbers, and even if it's 20% overstated, it's still a big number. Are we using these properties, again, the Civic Center is vacant, so no, we're not using them to the most efficient way possible. And Police and Fire, we know, needs a new or renovated building. And Noyce, we would argue, is not being used to its full potential. So the end product is after significant community engagement, and each property could have eight-month process or slightly longer or slightly less. It just depends on what the community feedback is and what feedback we're getting from the council when we come in and give you periodic updates, at a cadence that you're, that you direct us to bring it back. If you want it every, every month, we'll do that. If you want it quarterly, we'll do that. You're going to see us a lot at ward meetings if you want us there. You'll see us at neighborhood meetings. You'll see one-on-one, office hours meetings, maybe even block meetings. So the idea here is to create a significant community engagement process that'll direct us to come to you, to get your input, for us to then design a financial plan or even architectural renderings and concepts that we can then take to the marketplace if that's what the community demands and that's what you push us to do. In some cases, we may just say, let's change the operations of Noyce Cultural Arts Center. I want you to think about this bigger than just the three, because the putting assets to work... to work philosophy is around generating revenue from city property. It's not just, it's not a real estate play. It's not a disposition plan. We could take Noise Cultural Arts Center and a simple thing that we talked about with our consultant team is perhaps we create a retail store on the first floor. So people are engaging the building or generating revenue for the, for the tenants and then sales tax for the city. It's things like that. So the final product ends up being a recommendation to the city council. It's not a report, it's not a plan. Well, it is a plan for the individual buildings or properties. And then at that point, we, we select a partner in an RFQ process. We're not doing proposals. We're gonna find a team that can deliver whatever the community is asking and what the city council has directed us to do. I don't know if that was too many words, but the, the idea at the end of this is not a plan, it's, it's, or it's, it's not an urban plan. It's a recommendation and I guess it is a plan for each specific property.
So I guess to ask a couple maybe more pointed questions.
Sure.
To kind of narrow it down a little bit. Is this a, an exercise where we will be looking at like what type of money we can get for these assets if we were to sell them? What could be built there if we were to sell them? And does it include, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna pick on fire and police for a moment just because that's, that's the one that I think is probably the one that needs the most work, but we would also have, that is not being used. So would we also be involved in like citing a location for where they go as part of this, of this? Or is this all literally the disposition of and not the acquisition of? Or is it a combination of the two?
Right. Police and Fire is, is unique in this situation because they're occupying the building and they have an urgent need for updated facility. The question is, where do they go? Is it into a new facility? Or do we somehow stage it where they're operating in their facility while there's some kind of renovation or expansion happening? We don't know the answer yet. The community may have some ideas, but that one's probably something that we probably have more feedback from the real estate development, kind of facilities management community, and the city council feedback. Certainly, the, the community is gonna want to weigh in on some of this, but in terms of operations, police is gonna know best. Facility managers in that realm would be helpful and the team that we have, that we're recommending has experience doing this in other places. Again, noise, noise isn't as urgent. It's, it's in the grant because it's transit oriented development, we have the funding for it, and it has an immediate facilities need. But there's no need to rush them out and, or if at all, if we ever go down that path. But what's the possibilities there? Right? That's a, there's a parking lot there that could have parking and retail on it or housing above it. So it's, it's a mixed bag for, for each of the properties. It's a little different approach. But all of it is based in engagement and then back and forth with council and professional recommendations related to the, whatever field we're bringing to, to the properties.
And we're receiving a grant to cover the costs on this, correct?
Yes. The, the entirety of this process is covered by an innovation grant from the US Department of Transportation. My check-ins with them over the last few months is that that particular fund is currently safe from being cut by the executive branch, but, you know, things could change and if it changes, then the contract's terminated and we're done. But until that point, we're, we would, you know, move forward with, with that grant. And then that grant has a three-year timeline. It expires, that's it. So the work that, that, and we're not proposing anything beyond that at this point. Let's try to get through the three years. Hopefully, at the end of 20 months, that was in the scope of services that Prop Advisor put forward. At the end of that 20 months, hopefully, we'll have a, a plan in place. Again, I'm reluctant to use the word plan because we're not talking about an urban plan. At that point, the RFQ is issued and, and we, we go from there. That's the general timeline. And find our partner to help us implement.
All right. And we anticipate that we could, we could do any of the work that needs to be, that we want to do under this with that amount of money, no change orders.
There, there's no other source of funds for this.
That's what I'm getting at. I, I would not be in favor of us putting a single city dime out for this. If, if we're relying on the grant, then we're relying on the grant. And the timeline seems to be something that you feel we can operate within in a three-year period? And is that clock already ticking or does that?
The clock is ticking. We, we've lost approximately eight weeks just as we've put this. We're already under contract, just to be clear. I'm not sure if that was clear in your memo. We've been under contract from whatever the council awarded the contract in February. We put it on hold because of the, the challenge from one of the recipients, or sorry, one of the respondents. So we're eight weeks behind. We can easily catch up. The, the team's ready to start again on this tomorrow if the council approves it tonight.
All right, thank you.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for the first time, so we go back to councilmember Kelly with three and a half minutes left.
Thank you. I, you know, we have a new council now who were not involved in the many lengthy discussions that we had about facilities. And I will say, the identification of these three facilities was staff-driven, albeit with the acquiescence of council. But I think it's really important that the members up here have an opportunity to discuss these facilities, to talk about deferred maintenance and does that mean, you know, what that means and how we address that. So I am, I am still very reluctant to support this right now. I think we need more details to understand going forward. I think we should hear more from this new council about the facilities and have larger discussions before we, you know, give a contract. And I know we have Mr. McLean, Mr., we do have one local member who would be involved, but this is a firm from Utah also that, and it's a lot of money, albeit it's tax dollars, not ours, but this is, you know, a lot of funding we've already spent, already $250,000 has been spent on this. I'm sorry, but this just seems out of whack. Like, we're talking about spending over a million dollars to look at possibilities for three facilities and we're in the middle of a comprehensive plan. This just feels inappropriate to me. It feels like we should be following at least an order of events that makes more sense. Let's do our comprehensive plan. Let's, all hands on deck for that, focus on that, our strategic housing plan. And I also, I know it's 36 months. In the application, we say it will be, it will be completed in 36 months or is that when the grant expires?
Thank you. The, the grant guidelines require that the, that we deliver on our scope within 36 months.
And, and the grant itself would expire when? In '28?
Oh, '28, February. I believe I said January 31st, '28.
So we could, our 36-month, I mean, that's what we're saying would be 36 months, but the grant we would have, we could start that clock?
No, the grant clock already started because we signed the contract. Yeah, yeah.
So that's a little confusing too, that we're here voting on this, but you're saying we're already in it.
Well, the, the city council approved the contract and, again, just to be clear for the entire council and those watching, as I explained in the staff report, there was a technical glitch in the procurement system when we, when we downloaded the RFPs, for those who responded to the RFP, one of them was left off. We downloaded them, and this is out of the procurement department or division. So we, we downloaded them, we evaluated them, we presented to the council, the same way that you see tonight. One of the firms, Urban Resolve, was not on that list because of the glitch with the DemandStar system that it was, it was, it was frankly an issue on the city side. It wasn't DemandStar's fault. It was, it was just a technical glitch. But that firm, Urban Resolve, asked us to reevaluate the, the entirety of the RFP's responses because they didn't in fact submit in time. So that, we came to council a few weeks ago, at this point it was eight weeks ago, to ask for your authority to reopen, to reevaluate them. We, we did that, we rescored them. Again, and then we interviewed the top two scoring. The one that, the Urban Resolve team did not make the interview round, there were two teams in the, in the interview round. The second team did pretty well, but Prop Advisor remained on top. We, we held firm on that after reviewing them.
Thank you. So why would the clock have started ticking if we weren't in fact yet engaging with any specific firm?
In February, we did. The council gave us authority to move forward.
Right. But I thought we put it on pause.
We put it on pause eight weeks ago, but we started, we started in February. The firm that did not make the final cut, because they were, they did not make the DemandStar system, they discovered that they weren't included later and then they came to us and said, we want to be evaluated. And so we, we looked at our options and thought that was the safest option from, from a legal standpoint, that we should pause our existing contract, reevaluate them with the, in the context of having Urban Resolve's RFP response as part of it. And then reevaluated them, did our interviews, we had, we had a slightly different team scoring them at Urban Resolve's request. And then we're coming tonight to ask to basically start the contract back up with Prop Advisor.
I see. Thank you. So I mean, I know.
And it's mildly confusing and I apologize for that.
When we started this whole process in '23, I think it was April, and we have had Mayor Ben McAdams present to us at the time why we should get involved in this pause stuff, which then led to this. And he subsequently became CEO of this firm that we're now gonna award $900,000 to, right?
I don't know the order of operat-, I mean, he's been a consultant.
He wasn't the CEO, I mean.
Yeah, I don't know when he founded that.
I mean, I'm not, I'm, you know. So, I mean, the person that talked us into this and now we're awarding this firm a $900,000 contract. So, you know, I am concerned that that was, you know, again, that this is moving forward in a way that is not in any alignment with what we're doing. And I, I can't support that and I would want to see it, again, I could possibly support it if, if staff were to come back with a detailed explanation as to how this can jive and work without taking staff time away and correlate with outcomes from the comprehensive plan and the strategic plan. I'm just not seeing it now. I just feel like we're laying right on one more. Again, we had bad experience with previous consultants. We know what happened with JLL when, you know, we made it, just let them do it. It's not gonna cost us any money. Let them go out and find rentals and next thing we know is the special order business and we are moving out of the Civic Center. And we had this bad experience with the consultants for Envision Evanston. And so now I see us wanting to engage with another consultant to layer yet another project plan. I don't think this is, that we're proceeding in as thoughtful as a way as we should. I know it's money and we all just want to jump on it because it's a grant, but I don't think that's what should be driving us right now. So I would prefer to hold this, to get a more thorough and detailed review by staff of making this work with our comprehensive plan.
Councilmember Burns.
You know, the, it feels like the comp plan we're gonna have wrapped up soon. I'm, at least one council member that feels like we should wait until we have the strategic housing plan to, to finalize it, but we'll have most of it wrapped up, the non-housing related parts of it in my mind wrapped up soon. You, you keep mentioning councilmember Kelly taking up staff time. This is to hire a consultant. And so invariably, it should take less staff time if we have consultants working on a project, facilitating meetings than it would if staff were doing that. So I don't really understand that point. Also want to clear up some other stuff that was said is that we, we had a process already of looking at all these, at the different possibilities and scenarios. In my mind, putting assets to work in many respects is picking up where that left off. And all of this information is available to any new council member that wants to review it. I'm sure if you ask staff to meet with him, they would be more than happy to, to meet with you, to explain how we got here and, and all the work that was done before you were elected. But there was a considerable amount of work put into coming up with different scenarios. Some of those briefly were looking at the Civic Center and Police and Fire Headquarters, what would the cost be to upgrade in their current locations? That was one scenario that was looked at. Another one was build a combined facility, City Hall, Police and Fire in one location, maximizing efficiencies. Another one was, was signing a lease here, 909, to stabilize operations, allowing planning to continue for a permanent facility. So again, as I said earlier, there's been no commitment by this council at least. Individually, people may have certain opinions on what should, what should happen, but as a council, we have not made any decision, as a, a majority of us has not made that decision. So that was looked at. Purchasing and converting of 1801, 1806 Maple Avenue, we could acquire and convert NU-owned, Northwestern University-owned buildings to house Police and Fire Services. Another thing we looked at was relocate Civic Center into proposed high-rise at 900 Clark. City Hall could occupy ground through fifth floor, that actually might be a more newer proposal. Colloquy Civic Center, MS Public Library, my point, and, and I'm just like, I'm just giving you like the bullet points, right? There were documents, there was a whole report that we got that went into great detail about each one of those different scenarios. And so this idea that it's like, oh, well, we need more, we, we put in a lot of work already. I think the commitment in putting assets to work is to pick up where that left off, to continue those discussions, at least for these three facilities. And so I just wanted to get that on the record because there was, the suggestion made earlier that that work has not been done at all and can't be further from the truth. There was a lot of effort, a lot of city money. I think that was local money. I don't think that was a grant. That might have been, no, did we use ARPA money for that? I can't remember actually. Was it ARPA money? No, ARPA money? So that was local funds that we used for that?
It was not ARPA.
That wasn't ARPA, so that was local funds.
No, that was done through just the regular debt issuance for capital programs.
You know, so that was our own money that we put in to make sure that work was done. So I just want, want to clear that up. I think Paul made a good point at our last meeting that, that we're still gonna have to do this work even after comp plan and strategic plan. Like, it is high level, as he put it, both of those plans, even zoning comp plan is high level. It's not gonna give us the type of direction this is gonna give us on these three very specific facilities. And, and I don't see how they, this can't work alongside those when we have a three-year one way for one and a strategic housing plan and likely a comp plan that's gonna be wrapped up by the end of the year. You know, you hear from public comments, some people are saying, we're not moving fast enough, right? Don't we know what we need already? We need housing, we need affordable housing. And then one of their champions on the council saying, oh, we need to slow things up. They're just, we're all over the place. And I think if anything, this is gonna add some much needed structure to, and I'll, I'll take the point that one of the public commenters make, I think this is gonna make it so we can move a little quicker, but it's gonna allow us to, to add more structure to it by having a professional consultant to help work with us on this. So, I mean, I can go on and on, but this is, this is the right decision to make. We're doing it with federal money. Let's, let's get this done. Thank you.
At this time, no one is requesting to speak for the first time, so we go back to councilmember Rogers with three minutes left.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanna throw something out there because it keeps getting brought up a little bit and I'm, I'm not trying to be argumentative or anything, but what previous councils have decided, if this council decides with three new members to change, it can do. So just putting that out there, I'm not going to hold this project up, but I do have a couple questions, a couple more questions for Mr. Zalmazak. When we're looking at these properties, are we doing all three at the exact same time? Are we doing them, I guess, is it consecutive or concurrent?
Thank you. I'm, I'm impressed with the ability of our consultant team to do these things at the same time. When we, when we first started this and how they've started constructing the, the community engagement app that they'll be using, it's happening at the same time. But, but there may be some divergence when, just depending on the community engagement feedback we get, it may be quickly discovered that one's really easy and we'll get through that one quickly, or we'll put one on kind of a back burner because maybe one is, I, I keep thinking Police and Fire is gonna, gonna quickly take priority at some point. But yeah, they're going concurrently.
And that leads into my next question, which, or not even a question really, but a statement that if they're not moving at the same time or we have to prioritize at some point, that Police and Fire be the one that move forward more quickly because I don't think there are the questions either at the dais or in the community that there is on the other two properties. I think that's more clear and I also think that that is more of an immediate need in terms of making sure that our first responders have the latest and greatest, that we identify where we need to have them, what they need to have, what facility best suits them. So I guess that's not really a question, but more of a, an observation that I'll just throw out there and I don't know how the rest of council feels about that as well.
Yeah, that's helpful guidance for staff if you want to discuss that.
Councilmember Davis.
I would second that observation.
At this time, no one is asking to speak for a first time, so we go back to councilmember Burns who has 20 seconds left. And just as a fair warning, I'm gonna enforce this time limit.
I, I just wanted to say that the will of council doesn't change unless we make a motion and we vote on it. So I just want to be clear. And so if we vote on something else today, then we'll have a different And so if we vote on something else today, then we'll have a different direction. But I'm just saying, up until this point, the only thing that this council should, that we should, that, that people, our action is when we vote on something. So folks have motions, that's all I wanted to say.
So speaking of which, would the clerk please take the roll? Your time is up as well.
Councilmember Burns?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Didn't I make a motion to hold?
We're going through, I'll, I'll address procedural questions after, but we're going through a motion at this time.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
What are we voting on?
We're voting on the approval of the contract award to PropVisor for putting assets to work, innovative finance and asset concession grant implementation services, reevaluated RFP 25-02.
Previously motion, but didn't get, we didn't finish. Didn't I not motion to hold?
You sort of talked about the concept of holding. I would not characterize what you did as making a motion. If you did, no one seconded it. So let the roll call continue, please.
Okay.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
No.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and one voting against, the motion carries and the contract award is approved.
I was, I was actually opposed.
What's that?
I was opposed. I made a mistake.
We're allowed to, at this time, still change a vote? Is that correct?
I said it at the time. I said aye, I mean, no. So I didn't, it was like-
Oh, it was my mistake. I apologize. With five voting in favor and two voting against, the motion carries. Sorry about that, councilmember.
Thank you.
With five in favor and two councilmembers Kelly and Davis voting against, the motion carries and the contract award is approved. Now on item A9, Councilmember Harris, do you have a motion?
I do. Thank you. Approval of a one-year renewal of ARC GIS software with whoever they are, ESRI Inc.
Motion fails for lack of-
Thank you.
Councilmember Harris moves approval of a one-year renewal of ARC GIS software with Esri Incorporated. Councilmember Burns seconds. Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. I'll support this, but I do want to continue the conversation with staff to look into the GIS consortium. I think collaborating with, there's 41 communities around here, and basically all the communities are a member of this, and I think it would really behoove us to look into that. I think it would be, to switch over, it would be a little bit difficult in the beginning, but I think in the end, we would be more efficient, we would be able to share in best practices. You know, if you look on their webpage, they feature the Village of Libertyville, modernizing their playground inspection process through the collaboration and the work of the consortium, the GIS consortium. I think there's a lot that we would benefit from. So I, I just want to put that out. I know I've said that before in '22, and I would like staff to at least please look into what it would take to become a member. Again, Skokie's a member, Displanes, other cities are size or members. I think it's 41 communities in this area, so. And, and we would, I believe, end up saving money. So I would, I just, I guess I would like to move that we direct staff to at least bring back some information about what it would mean for us to join the consortium. I don't know if anybody would want to second that.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Kelly moves, wait, sorry, that's probably not in order in the middle of, Cynthia, is that?
So it's kind of a, right, so we can vote, well, it's part of this. So it, it's moving, asking, giving staff direction to bring back, we'll vote on this, but it's part of this discussion. I just don't want to be cut off from being able to discuss this and make a motion.
Cynthia, can you answer the question?
So I think we should just move to approve, approve it first, then we can discuss it. If you want to make some sort of sub-motion within it, then you would have to wait till the discussion period of the general motion.
Well, the discussion period of the general motion is happening now.
Yeah, so I would say that the discussion period has to be concluded before you would make this additional motion.
What?
Point of order.
Councilmember Rogers?
Would an amendment to the standing motion be sufficient? I believe it would. So if that's agreeable to council with an S, then if Councilmember Kelly would amend the original motion to include a staff review, I would second that motion.
Okay, then I will change that to that motion, amending the motion, the main motion, A9, to include, so to go ahead and move, to approve that with, with amended to request that staff review membership to the CIS consortium.
And I would second that.
Just to break the fourth wall for a second, this is why our rules suck. Let's rebuild the fourth wall. Okay, Councilmember Kelly moves to amend the underlying motion to, in addition to approving this one-year renewal, direct staff to conduct a review of the possibility of joining the ARC GIS consortium. Councilmember Rogers seconds that motion. Would the clerk please take the roll on the motion to amend? So if this passes, then we have the whole, the whole kind of agglomerated mishmash will be before us as one single thing. So this is the motion to amend, this is the motion to add the, hey, look into the consortium to the approval.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Isles?
No.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
With four voting in favor and two voting against, the motion carries and the underlying motion is amended. Councilmember Kelly, you still have the floor if you want it?
No, that's great. I look forward to hearing about what membership could look like for our city.
Okay, we'll go to Luke first, and then, Councilmember Rogers, is your light still relevant?
No, I was actually going to just, before there was an actual motion, say I agreed with Councilmember Kelly.
Great, so we'll go to, we'll go to Luke and then a roll call.
So just, I want to clarify, the GIS consortium is typically for smaller municipalities who don't have an economy of scale to have a dedicated GIS coordinator. We have a GIS coordinator who's worked for the city for over 30 years, who has tremendous institutional experience. And so I, by investigating the GIS consortium, basically, the suggestion would be to then outsource our GIS services. So I just want to clarify what exactly the GIS consortium involves.
Well, I mean, I don't think anyone's weighing in on whether that's a good idea. I just think, it sounds like some folks want another explanation of what the options before us are, and so if staff can come back with that, that's, that's all they're asking for.
Sure. I just, I just want to reiterate that we, we covered this pretty extensively at APW and-
That's why I said another. But you did buy yourself some, some retorts. Councilmember Rogers first.
That was going to be, I mean, we're asking for an exploration. That's all I want is more detail. And if the answer is, we already have somebody who can achieve all of this and we really wouldn't benefit, then that's an answer. But I would just like to have that answer provided to us with a little more, with a little more exploration.
Councilmember Harris.
So I just want to be clear and understanding. We were told that we have it internal. We just spent a couple times talking about, we don't want a consultant, but now we want to go outside and look for a consultant for somebody who's had a job here for numerous decades, taking up staff time to figure out, can he do his job? Or is it cheaper to do it elsewhere? When he told us in APNW that he could and that they didn't, our size was too big. So I just want to, some, is that what I'm hearing us say again, that we want to?
That's exactly what's, what's happening here, and, you know.
We don't want consultants, but we do. Okay, thank you.
I guess I would urge folks to, I think all of us who would like to see the organization be more efficient would, I think, benefit from a practice of not repeating arguments that have just been resolved, but to each their own. At this time, no one is requesting to speak for a first time, so we go back to Councilmember Kelly with three minutes left.
Right, so I do want to point out that it is almost all the communities around here, and many of them are, it's Skokie, Displanes, similar size. We just happen to be one of the biggest, except for Chicago, so it's not that. And it's about sharing resources, information, staffing, technology. I think we need to see if we could benefit from that. I think our staff does a wonderful job, but this is about expanding and coordinating also with other communities. So I don't think this is, you know, I'd be happy to do the research and call them up if staff wants. I, I don't think this is asking so much to, to get some input back to us as to what this would, what would be involved in this.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris? Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries, the contract is approved, and staff has been directed to go back and gather the information previously shared and repeat it. Councilmember Burns, who's the chair of HDC, is not longer with us. Is there a motion relative to item HDC1?
I'll make that motion.
I move approval of HDC1.
Councilmember, let's, tie goes to the faraway guy. Herakaris moves approval of the draft 2025 through 2029 consolidated plan incorporating 2025 entitlement grants and the draft 2024 citizen participation plan. Councilmember Harris seconds. Is there any discussion? Would the clerk please take the roll? Oh, Councilmember Kelly.
So when does this, the public, when does this, when does this have to be submitted? What's the deadline for this?
The city has until August 8th to submit this to HUD, and we've been told no extensions will be granted for that deadline.
Okay. I did have concerns about what Jeff Smith said. I do respect him. I know he studies this in depth. Do you have any responses to that? He pointed out numerous errors in there. I mean, I'm wondering if those could be corrected and brought back?
I would need to understand specifically from Jeff Smith what changes or corrections he would like to be, like to see. The close of the public comment ended today, so we will be taking all of that feedback and incorporating it into the submittal that goes forward to HUD.
Okay, so I think he did send a lengthy email, a very long email.
Okay. I, I don't know if I received that ahead of this conversation, but I'm happy to go back and work with the team on it.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. Thank you, that's all.
Councilmember Rogers.
Ms. Williams, before you sit down, I don't want you to have to come back up. Quick question. So we're being asked to approve this, but we're still putting public comment in at this point, or?
No, the mayor, yeah, the mayor closed public comment at the end of public testimony this evening, so no additional public comment is being accepted beyond this evening's meeting.
But the, the public comment that was provided tonight has been accepted into-
Correct, into the record, yes.
If there are changes to that, we're being asked to approve this tonight without knowing if any of those changes are going in, or I'm confused.
Yeah, HUD is very specific in terms of the data sets that the city of Evanston is supposed to use, so whether or not there are discrepancies with other data sources that are out there. We have a specific set of data that HUD actually imports into our plan. So it's not necessarily like we have a lot of latitude in terms of what we can change in terms of the specific data associated with it. I would also mention that there was a previous public comment period associated with this plan. This is actually the second time, and the reason we are doing it the second time is because the city actually received additional grant funding based on the 2024 fiscal budget through the federal government. So this is actually a good news story. We're, we're receiving more funding than we anticipated, and this amendment and the second public comment period is to address that increase in funding resources that the city did realize.
So I guess I just want to make sure that if there have been public comment that we have received in between and up to tonight, that that is being included in our report.
Yes, and HUD requires us to submit all of that public testimony as well as part of our submission to them.
So anything that's been submitted orally, written, anything will be included with that. So our approval tonight is for approval of the document as it stands, but also including any and all public comments that may point out if there's discrepancies in numbers, things like that.
Absolutely. To the discretion that we have to modify those numbers, we will absolutely do so.
Okay.
Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Isles?
Aye.
With six voting in favor and none voting against, the motion carries and the draft is approved. Now in call of the wards, Councilmember Davis.
I don't have anything.
Councilmember Rogers.
The eighth ward and the sixth ward are doing a combined comprehensive general plan Zoom call on Thursday evening at 6:30. And I don't, last I looked, it was not on the city calendar, so I'm looking around the room. I guess I'll look to the city manager, since he's the one I know can get it, so that we can make sure that that's on there. I'm not 100% sure if it's been added on in the past day or so. Thank you.
Councilmember Herakaris.
This weekend, the 19th, at the Dr. Jorge and Luz Maria Prieto Center, there will be an unveiling of the sign, and we'll be there to celebrate the naming. And I encourage all, everyone in Evanston that come out, it should be a great event.
Councilmember Kelly.
Thank you. Tomorrow, we have NU City Committee meeting here at 4 o'clock in the council chambers, where we will collaborate, work together to discuss Envision Evanston and the buffer zones, the T1, T2, and U1 zones, and our, and goals for the future. So I hope, please join us both virtually, I think, or in person. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Just wanted to remind the second ward that I will not be at the next council meeting, July 28th. I will be on vacation, so that they know. Other than that, no report.
Councilmember Isles.
My normal, my normal office hours are the third Monday of the month from 6 to 8, but I will be here instead, enjoying public comment from 6 to 8. And so I'm going to move my office hours to Tuesday from 6 to 8 at Who's Your Mama's, and I'll send out a notice to the ward, to that effect.
Councilmember Isles is recognized to make a motion.
Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120 slash 2C, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding C11 litigation. This item agenda, this agenda item is permitted, is a permitted subject to be considered in executive session and is an enumerated exception under the Open Meetings Act as set forth in five, ILCS 120 slash 2C. Second.
Councilmember Isles moved the city council resolve itself into an executive session for the reason just enumerated. Councilmember Harris seconds. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Rogers?
Aye.
Councilmember Herakaris?
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly?
Aye.
Councilmember Harris?[1785.22]